Okay, where is the phones? I can't get them. You're a boss.
No, you're.
Hold on. So.
Well.
It's gonna be very, very. They're the one. There's always. Boss on the right side.
That didn't do it.
It was so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our. And last, thank you. And some. Maybe regards to the. There's any federal. Law in regards to. Planes. In the. That's for trying to hear more favoritism activity from planes.
Is your about airspace?
Um, no, Gary's airspace or Gary's news. Cause they're expanding it. So that means there's going to be more traffic. But I don't see many.
Yeah, they would have, they would have already had to.
But with Gary, you know, this right thing, they like the new. There's a plane that one. First, our media. That one. I can't.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
So, no, I don't so either. That's not the same.
Yeah.
That's ready. Just a card.
How do you do, sir? Always a pleasure. Thanks.
I just got done talking to Reggie. I thought you were gonna be on my way in here. Diana's going to China. Diana's going to China.
Hey Stacy, bring me a.
Here, Shanghai.
Stacy, bring the plate.
So, I was telling you. Cause they wrote a contract in Chinese. They wrote a contract in Chinese. She's in here. Let's see. Twice. So she's like, oh.
Each Chicago nine thousand meeting will now come to order on Wednesday at October ninth thousand twenty-four. We stand for President of Elegance. What's your name? Just saying. Why you just? I got. And you just. And Ricky just asked for a hall.
But the. First, District Councilwoman Monica Gonzalez. Third, District Councilman Karen Hill. Fourth, District Councilwoman Stacy Winfield. Fifth, District Councilwoman Robert Garcia. Sixth, District Councilwoman Gilda Orange. Councilman at large, Dwayne Ransford. Councilwoman at large, Vanessa Hernandez Horn. Councilman at large, Kenneth Monroe.
Present.
Council President, Vinnie Francis. Present. For the record of. With Medina, Councilman Kill and Councilwoman Gonzalez or weather. Councilman Garcia head of the business and I believe Councilwoman. Uh, first thing on the agenda is the public hearing. And the ordinance. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two-two. The Chicago Sanitary Ordinance for Appropriations Tax Rate. Year twenty twenty-five. We have someone to speak on this.
Donald, let's see.
Would you like to speak on?
Uh, we submitted budgets last meeting. We. Question. Office or to Mayor's office. Uh, I checked at five every number so far.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public that is for or against ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two-two? Council next ordinance, please. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two-three. The Chicago Civil City Ordinance. For Appropriations and Tax Rates in year twenty twenty-five.
Yes, your ordinance, we submitted all the information last meeting. And same service. And so I've been formally. With the, the public hearing. Next meeting till twenty-three. And the data adoption.
Do we have anybody from the public that is for or against ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two-three? Thank you. I have a motion to accept the minutes for the council meeting on Wednesday, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Again.
Motion was made by council in France, first, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. Have any questions on the motion? Port Medina, roll call, please. Winfield.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
I have a motion to accept the minutes for the council meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Don't move. Motion was made by Councilman Ransford, seconded by Councilwoman Winfield. Have any questions on motion? Port Medina, roll call, please. Winfield.
Yeah.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do I have any communication from the mess? I have none. Any communications from the board? We have. Payable warrant. Zero nine, two zero, two four CC. One zero, zero nine, two four CC. And one, zero, zero nine, two four LA. To move. Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilman Ransford. To accept the council's payable warrants. Do I have any questions on motion? Roll call, please. Winfield.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Abstain.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Payroll warrant by weekly. Zero nine, two seven, two four. Miscellaneous, zero nine, two seven, two four. Monthly, one, zero, zero, one, two, four. So move.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilwoman Winfield. To accept the payroll warrants. Do I have any questions on the motion? Port Medina, roll call, please. Winfield.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any committee reports? Do we have any board reports?
Good evening. We're into artists in Chicago. I've come here representing you all. Uh, for the developer board. As a reason, a little clarity, I ask, uh, Mr. Carl Sender and our director. Uh, Mr. Frank DePierre. Anytime we have anything that's perfect. That's coming for us. We have each has by the way, the board, the bill of the board, then I come for the council. Give us a leeway, well, that way we can, I can come back to you all, let you all know what's going on before I have to vote on anything like that. So the last meeting, what happened, uh, we passed the tax agreement. On a Tuesday. And so that Wednesday, the following Wednesday, it came to you all, pass the tax rate. So me or no one else had an opportunity to come here. To explain to you all the reason why. So I'll answer in the. In the future. Give us our tone by being representative presentation. You, uh. You know, the leeway and both of the read that. Another thing too, I just want to. Uh, and on that redevelopment doing outside a job, the mayor. Possibly making sure doing rehab, first rehab, all of the city. Everybody get their fair share of rehab, first rehab plus. Uh, you guys have big programs, big projects coming up in. Marstown and Camden. And by being Camden resident, um, I'm over, overwhelmed and very excited because there's some big things with Camden and Camden. And looking forward to having you.
Thank you. Port Medina, any words about first reading? Ordinance first reading, ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two-seven. Sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland and Councilwoman Wayne Ransford. Ordinance, the common council. The city of Chicago and authorizing the issue. Economic dwell and revenue bonds. Suppliers business park area project. And approving other actions in retrospect there for. Make a motion to. Except.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Ransford, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. To your ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two-seven on first reading. Have any questions on motion?
You got who wants to speak on?
We have someone here to speak on that, please.
Good evening, council members, Carl Sender, Sender of the N S four advisors. Here to, uh, just give you a brief overview. Um, as you know, we've been regularly appearing before. The council redevelopment commission for this project with on play development and harvest food group. Also here with me tonight is Barbara Normal, who's CFO of Harvest Foods. And she'd be happy to answer any questions, but this is their big project that's going in. Um, on a hundred, uh, three hundred West, one hundred fifty-first street. Uh, your last meeting did approve, uh, tax payment on their personal property, planned personal property additions. Tonight is kind of the final step coming before you. Um, is to have you consider a first reading tonight. Um, the bond ordinance that just outlines the maximum term of the bonds, which is not to exceed eight million dollars. And the term is not to exceed twenty-five years, although. Uh, we think that the bonds themselves only go out eighteen years. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, this is part of the development agreement that you approved back in the July.
Roll call, please. Winfield.
Yeah.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Next ordinance, please. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero, zero, two-eight, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. Salary ordinance for appointed officers and employees in the city of Chicago. To move.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. To hear ordinance twenty-four dash zero, zero, two-eight. On first reading. Any questions on motion? Roll call, please. Winfield.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any ordinances on second reading? We have two. First ordinance on second reading, ordinance twenty-four dash zero, zero, two-three. The Chicago Civil City Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rate year twenty twenty-five. I'll hold it.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. Your ordinance twenty-four dash zero, zero, two-three in second reading. Any questions on motion? Port Medina, roll call, please. Winfield.
Yeah.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe. Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Next ordinance on second reading, ordinance twenty-four dash zero, zero, two-six, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. Appropriations ordinance, local and bridge grant fund forty-five, zero, one, H M A overlay. So. Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilwoman Winfield. Your ordinance twenty-four dash zero, zero, two-six. Do I have any questions on the motion? Port Medina, roll call, please. Winfield.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yeah.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do I have any words on first reading? We have none. Any resolutions? We have none. Do I have any old business? Councilwoman Hernandez Orange.
Um, I wanted to bring up the council bill of warmen warrants for today. Um. There's a item on the council bill of warrants that I think our attorney could speak on, so we could actually pay. Uh, most of our warrants.
Yeah, so I think, uh, Councilwoman Hernandez Orange meant to break out one portion of the payroll warrant. And for the, the group to vote on the remainder versus her abstaining from the entire payroll warrant.
So, cause there's a conflict of the individual that's actually on proceeding reimbursement. So rather than to have the conflict. Um, happen. We, we could remove that one item, then we could prove the rest of it.
Mr. Porter, can we revisit that? Your available warrants?
So I can, you want me to do that?
So you'll do, you'll, you'll voice up motion to break out the one item off the payroll warrant. And then, um.
You do that or number?
You'll.
I have to approve the remainder. So it's warrant. It's, um, comparable warrant, ten, oh, nine, two, four, CC.
Ten, excuse me, ten, zero, nine, CC.
Ten, zero, nine, two, four, CC, and then the PO that we're going to take out. So all the other warrants could be approved. But the one that I would like to take out is the PO two, four, two, one, six, seven. So it's a motion to approve the payroll warrant. With the, uh, removal of. PO, PO, two, four, two, one, six, seven, from a council bill of warrant, ten, zero, nine, two, four, CC.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor right now. From, uh, Hernandez Orange to. Pay all warrants except PO number two, four, two, one, six, seven. So. Motion was made by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange, seconded by Councilman Ransford. To remove PO number on a council payable warrant, two, four, two, one, six, seven. Any questions on this motion? Roll call, please. Mr. President, we're gonna, this, this vote is to remove and approve. Correct. Winfield.
Yeah.
Correct. Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Any other old business? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Winfield.
Yes, I just want to reiterate on my breast cancer walk, which is next Saturday, October nineteenth, Sunnyside Park. From eleven A M to one P M. We asking everyone to come out and support a survivor and take a lap for love.
Thank you very much. Any other old business? Moving on to new business, do we have any new business? Councilwoman Hernandez Orange.
I just wanna, um, say that this past weekend, several of the council people, or yesterday, several council members were there at the perimeter cutting of the U. Ivy Tech, um, and I think that the sentiment is being heard overall that Ivy Tech is. Um, trying to continue to. Build up E Chicago and continue that partnership is what's important. Uh, so it's nice to see that once again, they added the Delicarza name to the big building or in the front part as well as. Um, they put something on the inside, but overall it's the fact that they're investing in E Chicago. And, um, to have partners like that is what we need for a city to continue to thrive.
Thank you. Do we have any other new business? Moving on to public experience, please keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, first is Joseph. Radovich.
I'd like to, um. Go follow up with the leg cleanup. I'm not sure if you push some work here. He's an EPA document, now it's done. I'm sorry, what the paperwork looks like at our day. That's not true, it's even that. How much broke was on the, from the. Now the like. A letter. Kind of monetary. We went thirty feet up. You guys who have never got that kind of cleanup. They wasn't wanting to be. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, um. At concern with the leg cleanup and those people forming a CAG. And they had lawyers involved, see by EPA documents they handed. How much better to clean up for us, cause those people formed a CAG. And they had lawyers working on it. People look at the paperwork, you guys who have never got that kind of cleanup otherwise. It would have been half bad, they didn't got the hell out of here as fast as they could. I think you should give them the letter and some money involved. There's two people. Marissa Lopez and Keisha Daniel. Coach and me, I just showed up. He's a paid reporter. And he's very good and he's very present, I think he's good. They did an excellent job. Being wrong, but I think they did. And, um. Couple of things I want to ask you about, um, stray animal. Got a couple in the neighborhood. I know you asked the, um. Animal people, they want to charge you for the cage. I think the, uh, that's a safety issue, public safety. Wild animals, cats, batch people. People get diseases. If we agree. Will you do that for the yard, catch cat where it's running around? Yes, no, I don't know. And, um. You guys, those bus shelters, that's where the benches are, the weather changing. Not to put them all over town, I understand, they can't have it every bus stop, that people. This we had benches. Like downtown here, whatever you guys. But the weather's coming. Need some, some, uh, Valerie, that was American make.
Can we start with, sir? It's kind of three secondary.
Okay, she's kind of get a focus on her own life, great basement. She didn't curl. Book, it sounds cheap, it's bad and it's funny. You a couple bucks, but people have books now. You want to sign, that's what you want, book to the house, in my opinion. That'd be better. We must, if you like, you see out there, we get out, your books out for a dollar, you do a couple bucks. Then somebody's trying to book in the house. And most people that go to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Right here, sir.
I appreciate it.
Next, we have, uh, Mr. Ryan Lomax.
He, council. I've come to report a semi-serious issue in regards to, um. The social media aspect of our city. Uh, most of you, all of you probably know, I worked for being the multimedia of Steve Segura. Um, and then I was like, oh, which I now. Um, but then I was let go, which I'm now working with the court as a licensed prevention officer under Judge Sonny Morris. Um, but in the midst of all that, I found out that I was blocked off of the E C T V Facebook page, which is a public platform, which also. Per Steve's tutelage, I believe, um, that cannot happen. We're not allowed to ban or block anybody off of that page due to the fact that that is a infringement on constitutional rights and. Their, uh, freedom of speech. Unless it is well deserved. Um, I speak this because of the fact that I am a citizen before I'm a worker. Like thirty-three, grown up thirty-four years that I've been here trumps the five years that I've given the city. And I do have family, I live with family that also live in elderly. Um, heaven forbid, something of a national crisis occurs for. A inconsistency in the water supply. We've all seen the oil really, all the oilers. Um. How am I supposed to know that they're for the oilers, what happened if I do not have access to this information? Then further still, thousands of street closures that are in the city, how am I supposed to know that there's a street that is closed under construction? If I do not have access to that information? And then to put aside some street needs. If there's a citywide crisis, how do I know what to do, where to act, how to get my family situated? It's a period not right. I don't know why I was black when I was let go. Uh, it's not a matter of me being vigilant or belligerent because of that, it's just the fact that I'm a citizen first before I have the portrait second. So I just wish you one. But that was here. Uh, personally, that was very, I would have happened, but last I have not. Yeah, so. I leave it all to you all this evening, you all have a blessed.
Thank you. Have a moment to adjourn, please.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Ransford, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. Roll call, please. Winfield.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe. Franciscus.
Yes.
Good night.